Welcome to the November 18th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilman Bill Shacklet has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, well, I don't need to introduce them because they've been a part of our community for many, many years, but Cliff and Jane Sharp, would you come to the podium there? We're, this is their community treasures. They've been changing the lives and trajectory of people in our community through Greenhouse Ministries for many, many years. And there's some exciting things going on at Greenhouse, and I wanted to have them come up and kind of tell us about what the ministry, how the ministry is growing and how it's changing, and then do our opening prayer. Cliff?
Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, I get to visit a lot of churches, and when I go to a church and it seems like everybody is talking and laughing and having fun, I know things are really going well there. That's how I felt tonight when I walked in. So this is a great community, and we are so blessed to live here. I hope a lot of you have driven by and seen the building. I know two or three people here that came Monday night and took a tour, but we are very, very excited we'll have room. But, you know, this is, first of all, it's God's building. Secondly, it's a community. And if it were not for the great community we live in, it would not be there. But we really are excited about it. The most exciting thing to me about it is the top floor. We have seventeen apartments there, and it is a program that we're calling Life University. Men will pay rent to live there, but they will go through a program for twelve to eighteen months. And we hope when they finish the program, they will be, they will know what it means to be successful, as their definition of success, which is not money, I hope, and that they will really become part of the community. And so, again, we just thank, thank you so much for the opportunity to just say a little bit about it. We'll probably have a ribbon cutting in January, and we would love to have you come over and let us take you on a tour. Or anytime you come over, give me a call and I'll take you on a tour.
Awesome.
Let's go to our Father and thank Him. Father, we do give you thanks and praise for the great community that we live in. Father, with this special season where our country has set aside for Thanksgiving, Father, we just pray that as we give you thanks, you'll open our eyes and ears to see how blessed we are and that we will be even more thankful than we were. Father, we pray a special blessing on our community. We pray that you will continue to bless it, give us protection. Father, keep our health good. Father, bring prosperity to our community. And may we continue to work together to bring glory and honor and praise to you. And Father, we pray a specific prayer for each councilman and for the people who serve the city. Father, we pray that you will give them your wisdom, your insight to make the decisions they need to make for the good of the community and in all ways to bring glory, honor, and praise to you. Again, we just say thank you, God, for all that you do and for the blessings you have shed on us through the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Have one ceremonial item. Actually, have two, but want to recognize Lee, if you'll come to the podium, we've got something for you. I think of any person that I know, this is probably the one person who is, I don't want to say mad that you're standing here right now, but would not want to be recognized for individual honors, but Lee, you deserve what we're giving you tonight and have had the opportunity to be around you for the last long time. And I can always say, even going back to some of the issues that we dealt with back in 2018, Lee was not just on the forefront with leadership, Lee was on the forefront with setting an example, not only to those that are in leadership, but to the people that you serve with every day. So, got a proclamation for you. It says, "Whereas Lee Douglas has served Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department for thirty-three years, he has progressed to the rank of captain and served his first, the first chaplain beginning in 2001. And whereas he was recognized as the official, excuse me, the official department chaplain in 2016, Lee has expanded the chaplaincy program in 2018 to four chaplains in the department, representing the department and the city as chaplain on numerous deployments, including the Gatlinburg Fire, Line of Duty death in Lawrenceburg, and many, many more. He has also officiated numerous Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department events and funerals for retired or active members. And whereas retired Captain Lee Douglas is now named the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department Chaplain Emeritus, and whereas the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department Chaplaincy Program will be named Captain Houston Lee Douglas Chaplaincy Program. Now therefore, I shame McFarland, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim November 18th, 2021, to name Captain Houston Lee Douglas Chaplaincy Program and urge all the community to join in this well-deserved recognition."
Perhaps I want to present Lee with the shadow box. Lee, this is the shadow box, just kind of symbolizing your career as both the chaplain and captain and through the ranks of Murfreesboro Fire Rescue. You are going to be dearly missed by our fire department, but that's why we wanted you to always feel like that you would be the chaplain emeritus and stay the chaplain of our department for forever. You created the programs that run, and you've done so much for our personnel over the years. It just cannot be described what you have done for our department, and I just appreciate you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. I'm very humbled and honored. I know back in September 11th of 2001, when the trade centers went down during that horrific day, I noticed one of the casualties that day was a New York chaplain. And that's kind of how the Lord used that from a bad day to create something, a seed in me that, so Murfreesboro didn't have a chaplain, so we started to do some research. And I found an organization online, and kind of got some schooling through them, but was able to go to classes and to get certified as a chaplain. But there's no greater honor to serve. And I wouldn't be here right now if it wasn't for the Murfreesboro Fire Department, Murfreesboro Firefighters Association. Our organization is second to none. We see people at their worst, and we give them a little bit of hope, sometimes in hopeless situations. And sometimes whenever we, our guys leave scenes like that, sometimes those scenes stick to us, stick to the guys, and realizing that a chaplain can be someone who can maybe take off the edge a little bit whenever those bad scenes try to follow our guys home. But it's my honor to serve, and gee, this is, I don't have words to say thank you enough to Chief and the department for what this, what y'all have done, so thank you. But it's never been about me, it's always been about our firefighters, and just to see what they go through. And if we can just add a little bit of hope, we've done our job. And I'm very thankful that we've got four other chaplains now who can step up and serve. And someone once said, if you could, whenever you leave a career or whenever you move to another career, if you can leave it better than what it was when you arrived and you've been successful, so, not that I've been successful, but these guys have stepped up and were all successful, but from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
I have one more special presentation, and Councilman LaLance is going to go out in the front lobby to compete against this young lady here in a few minutes, because I want to introduce Arianna Isabel. And she won the AAU Junior, excuse me, Junior Olympic National Championships in Houston, Texas for the long jump this year.
Oh, yeah.
She's from Murfreesboro. Her long jump was sixteen feet, one and three-quarters inches. So, wanted to make sure and come up and recognize Arianna Isabel for her accomplishments, and then you'll get to compete against Rick here later on in the lobby. But come on up there.
I was hoping he was going to say ping pong. I got to admit.
Ask about what?
What school you go to? Introduce your mom and dad.
I go to Blackman Middle School, and my dad here, his name is Michael Isbell, and my mom is Luanne Isbell.
All right. Congratulations. I remember now, I was looking at the agenda, and I'm like, okay, trying to refresh my memory, and I remember that you guys had emailed, and one of the cool things about this is, a lot of times, we don't know how many great athletes, not only that, but just great kids that we have in our community, and want to thank your parents for making sure and letting us know that. So, this will now be in the record from here on out. So, congratulations, and maybe Rick needs to stretch.
I'm out. You win. I concede.
Let us know, and then we'll, probably we could do that for charity out. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. And I will say this to those who are watching, sometimes it amazes me how many people watch these meetings, but if you're a grandparent or a parent, and there's some kind of special recognition that you guys know that has happened in our community, don't hesitate to let us know. I think we all can agree, some of the funnest and best parts of our meetings are these ceremonial items, when we get to see not only what's happening in our community with other people, but we also get to show off a lot of the people who are inside our organization that really don't get the credit they deserve. A lot of times, we get to be able to share someone like Lee Douglas, or our Parks and Recreation staff, or Water and Sewer, all those people who are working hard for you every single day. So, make sure and just let us know. All right, you have the consent agenda, you have four items. Is there anything that needs to be removed from that agenda?
So, move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have the minutes of the November 4th, 2021 regular meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion, a second.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Under all business, you have ordinance 21040, fiscal year 22 budget amendment. This is ordinance, excuse me, budget amendment ordinance. This is the second and final reading. This is ordinance 21040.
So, move.
Second.
Motion, a second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. We had a, we have a plan of services, annexation, and zoning for property located along Franklin Road.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor and members of council.
Matthew, before you start, Arianna, y'all are welcome to stay with us, but you've missed the best part of the meeting where we actually talk about y'all. So, y'all are welcome to stay, but you don't have to sit and go through everything. You're not going to hurt our feelings, so feel free to go. All right. If you need a, if you need a police escort, there are two of them back there that can take you straight to the, so, thank y'all for coming again. We're, we're very proud of you. Sorry, Matthew.
Oh, no problem. I'm actually offended that you don't think this is the best part. Our first public hearing tonight is the annexation and plan of services for property located along Franklin Road and Veterans Parkway. It's undeveloped property, there are no structures on the property. There's a companion zoning request that will be the next item on the agenda, but the plan of services is in your agenda materials, and it shows that we can affect this annexation relatively easily. Sewers located across Veterans Parkway, or excuse me, is located on the property directly to the east of the subject property, so the applicant will need to get a sewer easement from that property owner in order to extend sewer to this property. But it is adjacent to the existing city limits, and it's within our urban growth boundary, and it is within our ability to provide services to this property. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on September the 1st and recommended its approval. I will give you more information about the zoning request when we get to the zoning item on the agenda. Be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Blomley. We'll need to conduct a public hearing on the plan of services and the annexation and the zoning. We'll start with the plan of services and the annexation, but anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium as an individual, you'll have three minutes. If you're representing a group, please state that group, and then you'll have five minutes. If you'll direct all your questions and comments to the city council, as the public, when the public hearing closes, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing from staff. So, anyone wishing to speak for or against, this is the plan of services and the annexation. Come to the podium, please. All right, seeing no comments, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider Resolution 21R PS 31 for the plan of services.
Move for approval. Second.
Can we clarify that Mr. Wright's family is not involved in this?
Oh, yeah, my family is not involved with this.
Because that will impact my vote, I'm just saying. Just trying to help you out there.
I clarified it at planning.
I know, I saw the minutes, I just making a point.
Yeah.
All right.
That's why I wasn't making motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now need to move to Resolution 21R A31 for the annexation. We'll need a motion for this one.
So, move.
Second.
Motion, a second.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now need to consider the zoning for 9.1 acres. Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. There is a zoning request on this property that we just considered for annexation. It consists of commercial highway zoning along the Veterans Parkway frontage. You'll see on the map here, this area here for commercial highway, and the balance of the property going down to Franklin Road as PRD, Planned Residential District, for a townhome development. Mr. Matt Taylor will get up momentarily and give you a presentation regarding the specifics of the, of the proposed PRD. I will reference the 2035 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map. It does call out this property as being recommended for general commercial. General commercial is what we would see along our major arterials. The commercial highway request along Veterans Parkway is consistent with the general commercial recommendation, however, the proposed PRD for townhomes is not. However, staff would recommend that the city council consider this as a, as a possible time to deviate from the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, given that the townhomes could be a good transition from the commercial along the major arterial of Veterans Parkway to the less dense residential uses further to the west. Also, one important component of the proposed development is the fact that it will add a fourth leg to the signalized intersection at the, or at the main entrance into the Kroger development. You'll see this signalized intersection right here that I've circled. The streets within this development will be public streets, which will provide alternative routes around, to the west, around the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road, providing for connectivity to the west and taking some traffic off of the intersection of, or potentially taking traffic off of the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Franklin Road. So, as staff, we feel that this is an important component of this development is, is this, this public roadway system and adding the fourth leg to that intersection. The Planning Commission considered the zoning request at its September 1st meeting, conducted a public hearing, and then recommended its approval. I won't spend time going over the details of the development, as Mr. Taylor, as I mentioned, has a PowerPoint. So, if you have any questions for me before or after the public hearing, I'll be happy
Thank you, Matthew. Mayor, members of the council, Matt Taylor of SCC, also accompanied today by Mr. Justin Harney of Harney Homes and Mr. John Harney representing the seller on the property. We do have a brief presentation of what we've termed villas at Veterans. As Mr. Blomley said, it's about a nine-acre piece of property at the northwestern quadrant of Veterans Parkway and Highway 96. Today, it's mainly open pasture and crops, and it is in the unincorporated areas of Rutherford County, zoned as REM or medium-density residential. This is a picture standing along Veterans Parkway, looking into the property, the Kroger would be to my back. This is some of the crops raised on the property. This is several months ago. This is across the street, an existing vet clinic, and then to the south of that, an existing dental clinic with Kroger in the background. The proposed plan itself is a mixture of commercial highway and PRD zoning. The PRD zoning allows for forty-nine townhome units, that's just under seven units to the acre. All of our utilities will be underground, we'll be dedicating almost four acres of open space, then the remainder, 1.79 acres, will be commercial highway zoning that would be along the frontage of Veterans Parkway. All the townhomes will be established and sold underneath an HPR, a horizontal property regime. All of our homeowners here will be part of the HOA, which will be managed by a third-party association that will take care of the maintenance of all common areas and exteriors. We will have landscape buffers around all sides. Each of our streets here will be public streets, and then we will be constructing turn lanes along Highway 96 into our entrance, and then dedicating right-of-way for a future right-turn lane on Veterans Parkway. The townhomes are all brick, stone, fiber cement, so the only vinyl will be in the trim and soffit areas. They're all two stories, and they're a minimum of thirteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet of living area and a mixture of one- and two-car garages. Townhomes, these are very similar to townhomes Harney Homes is building at the intersection of Manchester Highway and Joby Jackson. We did work with staff to make a few improvements, we think, added some more dormers or doghouses on the roof line, a little more variation between the, each unit through colors and/or materials, and then added these little window boxes underneath each to try to provide some variety throughout the neighborhood. Amenity-wise, we will have entrances at our entrance off, or entrance signs at our entrance off Highway 96, as well as directly behind the commercial portion coming off of Veterans Parkway. And then we'll also have a pavilion and playground, very central to the neighborhood. All of our streets here will have sidewalks on both sides, so to make this very walkable. We did locate our dog park away from the homes themselves. Access, again, will be from Veterans as well as Highway 96. We will construct the fourth leg of the signalized intersection on Veterans Parkway. And then along the north and western side, we'll be constructing a type C landscape buffer. Then along the eastern side, we'll be constructing a type A buffer. The existing commercial properties along 96 and Veterans will construct their own type C buffer adjoining us, and then whenever our commercial properties develop, they will construct their own type C buffer as well. And I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? All right, we'll need to hold a public hearing for this zoning of 9.1 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll now consider on first reading ordinance 21OZ 31.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any comments? Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now need to look at item eight, amending the Shelton Square PRD zoning along Blackman Road.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our last public hearing tonight is regarding the Shelton Square PRD located along Blackman Road and Florence Road. I'm sure many of you are familiar with this, with this subdivision. It's probably one of the fastest-growing subdivisions, if not the fastest-growing subdivision in our city. It is, they just recorded two more plats. It's been very successful over the last few years. As they began to see the trends within their development, because they're offering several different, different product types within the development, and they began to see the trends in the development and what the market was dictating, they determined that they needed to modify the numbers of the, of the different product types that they were offering. And so, what Mr. Taylor will go over in just a moment is, you'll see that they are actually increasing the number of the smallest lots and increasing the number of the largest lots and decreasing the numbers of the mid-sized lots. So, there's a table in your, in the staff comments from the Planning Commission that shows the breakdown of what they're increasing and what they're decreasing. They have kind of a pocket of smaller lots now here, very few of the smaller lots, they're alley, it's an alley-loaded product, and according to Mr. Taylor and his client, that has been a very successful product, and they want to expand the offering for that product. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on September the 1st and recommended its approval. In addition to the, to the modification of the number of lots per lot size, there were also some clarifications in the, in the revised pattern book regarding the amenities that are being proposed for this, for this subdivision. I will say also that the- are being proposed for this subdivision. I will say also that the net number of lots is not increasing. It's 771 in the approved PRD pattern book from 2016 or 17, and even with the shuffling of the different types of product types, it remains at 771. So they are not requesting an increase in density. That being said, I'll ask Mr. Taylor to come up and give you a brief PowerPoint presentation on his development. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you again, Mr. Blomley. Mayor, Council, Matt Taylor from SEC. I've also got Mr. Davis Lamb from Parks Development with me as well to go over this Shelton Square PRD amendment. As Mr. Blomley said, this was originally approved back in 2015, 2016 timeframe. We did request and receive approval for 771 single-family detached homes on just under 242 acres. We're, that was a mixture spread across really five different lot sizes. The smallest of those was at 3,500 square feet, up to a minimum of 10,000 square feet in size and larger. And so our proposed plan does not request any additional density. We are merely shuffling around inside of those numbers. What we found was the alley-loaded cottages, as we've termed them, were much more popular and sold much more successfully here than we had seen in any of the other developments in Murfreesboro for an alley-loaded offering, especially the first time that it was offered. And so we'd like to bring those to the market, some more of those internal to the project. Those are mainly focused around the internal park in generally this area, and so that creates a very nice streetscape, we think creates a lot of value in the community. We also saw that the large lots, the estate lots, there was more demand for those than we had originally projected, so we wanted to bring more of those to the market and to the development. And then we saw that we had overestimated the number of the 8,000-square-foot, or what we've termed retreat lots. We overestimated those, so we've decreased those. The other two sizes have really stayed unchanged, with just very minimal changes. So the cottages originally were just in this northwestern portion. Those have sold extremely well. And when I say they're the smallest lot, that does not mean they're the cheapest homes. They are extremely high price per square foot. They're highly amenitized. They're very high finishes on the inside. What we find is these are traditionally older buyers that are looking for higher-end finishes in homes. They just don't want to maintain the yard. And so these are by far not cheap homes. And so what we've done is locate those around the park so that you see the fronts as you come in. They focus on the park area, so creates a very unique and very aesthetically pleasing environment around that central park. Have not asked for any changes in quality or home sizes in any of these sections or home type. So this is a caption. This is several months old, but this is looking from the roundabout, looking back at these existing homes. At this point, the back alley there is fully built out as well. So it's been very, very popular. It's an existing elevation. The Village Homes, these are, this lot count has been largely unchanged. I think we reduced by about four. Most of these have actually been built out at this point. We do have a few left in there, about 50, I think, that are under construction with their infrastructure. But again, the quality of the homes, sizes have all remained unchanged. Here's some examples of existing homes built inside of this section. Sanctuary Homes, these homes are just now under construction. Again, we anticipate these to be older empty nesters based on the floor plans. So I don't have any actual pictures because they are still under construction, but do have some nice renderings. Another very high-quality product. Retreat Homes, these are the ones that we're decreasing by approximately 88. Again, nothing has changed except for the lot count. Here's a couple of examples of the homes built on these lots. And then the Estate Homes, really the only thing that's changed here is we've increased the number of these. Again, these are, I think all of these are custom builds, very nice, expensive homes, and they're located on the southern portion of the property. Amenities, our amenity package has done nothing but increase from the original approval. The original approval had a pool and poolhouse, as well as a playground. We have already committed to and installed multiple other amenities, including playground, dog park, a basketball court. We've also made a wet pond feature on the northern entrance to the development, created a very nice entryway there. In addition, at the pool, we have a little kiddie pool. We've also already built a bath house, and I think we're trying to break ground on what we've termed the manor house or clubhouse currently. And access, this is unchanged from the original approval, except we've constructed all of our roadway improvements. We've constructed left and right turn lanes at each of these access points. Our southern access point stub to the south was on the most recent plat recorded that Mr. Blomley mentioned, and then the one to the north, we have not platted that one yet, but it is close. And then I'll be happy to answer any questions. We did send out letters and maps to every resident inside of Shelton Square explaining the change. We also sent email and communicated through their social media pages the changes, and I had exactly one phone call. That gentleman was wondering when the basketball goal would be installed, because we had constructed the court, and the goal was on backorder, I think, because of COVID, but it has came in since that time, and I'm being told it's very popular and under constant use. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
I have a question, Matt.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the price of the lowest, medium, and highest home with this project?
So we ran the average sales price from June of 19 to August of this year. I did not run a more updated one. For the cottages, which are the smallest one, the average was about $395,000. The 51-foot wide, or the villages that I mentioned, were about $340,000, and then the retreat were about $448,000, and then the estates were about $630,000. My guess is if I was to take that and cut it to the last six months, all those prices are increased by 10% or 20% or 30%. The prices have gone up dramatically in the last six months, six to 12.
Thank you.
And so I will say that we did a little bit of math. I think somebody, maybe in our Planning Commission workshop, was concerned with adding more of the cottages. This, assuming these averages I just gave, this revision would actually increase the overall value of the neighborhood by approximately $2.5 to $3 million using those averages.
Did you say that so far that you have some of them already promised out?
So the cottages, we are completely sold out of the cottages. I think we had about 30 of those in the original application. I can look back, and every one of those has been built and sold. The reason we did not have more in the original application is because if you look in every development that had alley-loaded homes prior to this, they struggled, and most of those went back to the bank at some point. So obviously, we took a very conservative approach with those the first time, but they've been very successful. So we have a lot more confidence. We've got two or three builders on those lots, and they have been very successful and desire more.
Did I understand you to say that a lot of the sales of them are going to elderly people?
Of the cottages, and then also the new home type that is just now under construction. The people that have pre-bought in there or pre-sales, those have been, depends on what your classification of elderly is, but I do believe they're mainly older empty nester.
All right, we need to hold a public hearing for this PRD amendment. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll, please come to the podium. All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll now, we'll now consider on first reading ordinance 21OZ32.
Mayor, I'm going to abstain from the vote because I'm actively providing financing for the development, so.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right. Mr. Blomley, what public hearings do you have that we need to schedule?
We've got five public hearings. We would recommend item A on my list to be scheduled for December the 16th, and the reason why that's separate from the other, from the other items on the list is because we already have an annexation for the same property scheduled for December the 16th, so we're trying to marry up the zoning and the annexation to get them on the same agenda. I think that'll probably be best for anybody who wants to participate in that public hearing so that they don't have to come twice. Items B through E, we would recommend a public hearing date of January the 6th, if that pleases council.
We need a separate motion for A. Or can we just make one motion for two different dates?
One motion for, just reference.
Yep.
Staff recommendations.
Anybody got any issues with those dates? All right, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the recommendations, and A will go in the December, what is that, December the 16th, and then the remaining will go to January 6th.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we have Resolution 21R34. This is fiscal year '22, City Schools Budget Amendment Number Four.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have presenting a resolution for your approval that includes three budget amendments, all of which were approved by our school board on November 9th. The first is in regards to our summer school grant funding from this past school year. This amendment is necessary because the grant crossed over two fiscal years. This does not represent any new grant funds or programmatic changes, but it does rebudget $490,000 for current fiscal year expenses. The second amendment is to budget a new federal grant. We were awarded to address the needs of the immigrant students in our schools. MCS was awarded $22,913 to provide additional language development services. These are new funds. Finally, the third amendment is in regards to our consolidated funding application, which provides our annual federal grant funds. When this was budgeted originally and passed in May, preliminary amounts are used, as final grant allocations are not provided until October of each year. This amendment addresses an additional $28,417. We received an additional for the final allocation. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
No questions. I move for approval.
Second.
Can I just say, I mean, I kind of, this is a general question I always ask whenever we take, whenever we get grants. I just, just to make sure, I don't know all the intricacies. I always kind of ask, any kind of handcuffs that go along with these things, right? I mean, I do that from firefighter grants.
Oh, yeah. No, it's a great question.
Anything that we can, that we need to know.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Great question. So the summer school grant funding, the only handcuff to that is that we provide summer school, which we did last year, so that program is completed. The immigrant grant fund, that is a new grant because the number of immigrant students we have seen over the last two years has increased, and so we are not eligible for that. The handcuff to that is, or I should say, the stipulation is how we spend it, and we have to spend it on those students. And finally, the consolidated application, that is our annual grant funding. That's a reoccurring grant we get every year.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Duke. All right, we have on motion, item 11. This is a contract for the design of the fire administration building.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I've got a fire administration building contract for the design for approval. The current building used for the fire administration is far past its life cycle and impede the plant to be able to rehabilitate the building. A new administration building is planned for the Doug Young Public Safety Training Center. The preliminary design expense for the new fire administration offices is consistent with general expectations and for initial design of the type of facility. Can I ask, answer any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Duggan?
What do we anticipate the, what have we put aside for the expense of the building itself? Have we, this is CIP?
Right now, the CIP is at $6 million.
His design expense seems, $500,000 seems a little high. I don't know enough about building. I'm just kind of saying, it seems high.
Well, the $6 million, we set aside the $6 million. I would anticipate that we'd probably have to supplement that, and we'll probably supplement that from other CIP funds that we haven't used in other projects to roll that in there. Generally, design's going to run around 6%, 7%, depending on the type of building that you're designing. So it might be a little bit high, but, you know, I think it's within what we would expect to see on a design contract.
Okay.
5.9% is what the percentage is.
With the $6 million, that would include this, right? The $6 million that we put on CIP would include the design expense. So I was thinking it would be $500,000 out of $550,000, so we're closer to 10%.
No, the six, the total project cost is the $6 million right now, until we supplement it.
Including the design expense, though.
Including the design, yeah, that would be part of the project cost.
We're looking at 9% design expense.
Well, I think we're probably in reality closer to eight or nine before we get the building done. You know, we put $6 million in for this year, but again, we cut it back from, I can't remember, it was 10 or 11. We cut back to six for this budget, this CIP budget, and then recognizing we'll probably have to supplement some.
We need the building. I mean, I'm not, I don't mean to argue with that. We certainly, you know, the.
What's unique about this building is the site, the site is in place there at Doug Young. It's the squares, got a square lot already laid out for it with utilities tied to it, and it's, it's ready to go. So it's in a real good condition to start.
That was part of why I was surprised that the design expense was going to be so high, frankly, because, I mean, it's not like you got to figure out where to drain and where, you know, what, you know, how to.
Using for us, when we're looking at yearly budgeted amounts versus total project cost and percentages as related to that.
We're going to, we're going to try for the $6 million, try and hold it to the $6 million. I would say that the rule of thumb on the 6% would include a project that has land costs into it, and we don't have land costs into this. This is already owned by the city, so it would lower that percentage somewhat.
Okeydoke.
So the design services that we're looking at, does that include engineering, or is this just architecture?
No, it's part of the civil as well.
So this is everything?
Right.
So I think that is one thing we need to consider. Typically, your architecture services are 6%.
He's including this, and it's a designed, this designed-to-budget contract.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move for approval.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, we've got a motion, but I think what Rick is saying, what we've talked about, that if our budget's $6 million.
Right.
Let's try to stay at that $6 million and not supplement to where we're designing an $8 million building, and we have to supplement. So I think.
We have a designed-to-budget contract for $6 million. The only reason we may supplement is, has to do with building costs.
Yeah.
And what's happening to those in the market.
And I think the great thing that we're talking about here with, and Sean, this is probably a little new from the standpoint, when we built Fire Station Four, we did not do a design, or a design, a sub to the budget contract, and so we had to go back with multiple changes. But now, with a design-to-contract or budget, if the contractor, excuse me, if the architect designs a building that costs $9 million, then it's on their dime to go back and.
Fix it.
Revalue engineer that back to something else, which architects would never design something that is more than what your budget is, saying that sarcastically.
Sounds like experience there.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Kurt, I heard you.
Second.
All right. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland. Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, sir. All right, we have the stop-loss insurance for health insurance. Randolph.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The Employee Service Department is requesting your approval for the renewal of our current contract with Blue Ridge of Tennessee. Blue Ridge handles our stop-loss insurance, coverage provides insurance on individuals' claims above $150,000 and $200,000 for aggregate deductibles. The cost of the coverage is about $880,000, and it is paid for through premiums paid in our health insurance fund. The agreement is about a 7.8% increase over last year. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
If there aren't any, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. All right, you have a retail liquor certificate of compliance, Northwest Broad and Liquors and Spirits.
This is a, a new retail liquor store to be located at 1160 Northwest Broad Street. It's another certificate of compliance in accordance with state law. The applicant has met all requirements for the certificate of compliance.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have the purchase of Dell desktop computers. Mr. Terry.
Keep going, Mr. Terry.
Now, it's the fun part of the day, yeah. Mayor, council members, tonight we come before you to ask for the approval for purchase of Dell computers for public safety. These are replacing computers that were bought in 2015, 2016 for deployment, so we've generally tried to make everything last at least six years, and we've done that with this particular deployment. We're trying to work our way back into a normal replacement cycle. We got off kilter back in 2008 with the, when we had, CIP was not funded for a few years, so we've had, made some large purchases a couple of times, but I'm working to try to get that back into a normal, about a 20% replacement per year. This is not everything that we need to replace, but we're gonna try to shuffle some between now and then the next, the next funding to try to get back into a regular cycle. This is coming from Waypoint Technology, the purchase is off the Western County School Board bid, so that's been vetted by both purchasing and legal, and everybody gave their approval for this, and we ask for your approval to move forward.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we now have the purchase of mobile data, data terminals.
Much like the Dell workstations, these are the computers that we use in the patrol cars and fire apparatus. We're looking to buy 75, with this purchase, 30 will be utilized in the new patrol cars that you approved about a month or so ago, so we wanna go ahead and get ahead of the game. Those cars will be coming, and we're trying to make sure we stay ahead of the supply line issue right now to get these in. Forty-five units will be replacing computers that were bought in 2016. I know these computers are a little more pricey than a standard desktop computer, but I think we have proven that they do last. The old adage, you get what you pay for. These are in fire apparatus and police cars, used daily, and we've made, again, they've lasted, going on six years now, so we feel very confident with the, this particular vendor and product, so we ask for your approval on this.
The only question I'll ask about this is, if we do, are we, with this number of these, are we, are we getting caught up, I mean, with just doing, we're only getting 45 replaced, I mean, is it...
We'll, we will come back after the first year, what I...
Pretty soon, I mean, we're...
Yeah, so there's two aspects to this, the biggest thing is obviously 115 desktops, 75 mobiles, it's almost 200 computers, so I'm trying to also be, trying not to overwhelm my staff.
Oh, yeah, you can't, you can't get them...
With deployment, so I'm trying to break this out a little bit so that we can, I just don't want them sitting on the shelf, I wanna try to have no more than we can physically deploy.
I, I was trying to think about just inflationary pressure, you know, I mean, as far as letting bids get away from us and having to rebid and prices going up, we might as well just get these things knocked out if we know we're gonna use them, but it makes sense. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we now have the purchase of Clear ProFlex software.
Okay. This particular software, this is actually an addition to a product that we're already using, our detective division, uniform division, background investigators use this product. It is kind of a one-stop shop where they can go in, it's tied to a lot of different databases for financial criminal justice. The piece that we're wanting to add tonight is, it adds additional commercial data, primarily license plate recognition data from, that comes from commercial tow trucks. We have found that Clear has been a very valuable tool for us, and we, we know that the use of LPR technology is, is very important for the investigative uses, so we would like to add this, we budgeted for this in the FY 2122 budget, so, again, it's been through purchasing and legal, and everybody is on board, and we just asked for approval to enter into the, a two-year contract with them.
Any questions for Mr. Terry?
Kurt, you got a commercial license plate, now, yeah, I, I second that.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Appreciate your hard work. And, real quickly, I wanna say thank you to Mr. Terry, to Seth, to Chief Bowen, his team. Recently, I think we've gone through a month that the city council had talked about for a couple of years, our dispatchers providing emergency medical dispatch now that we don't have to transfer callers, that went live October, excuse me, that went right, live October 1st, and they've been working really hard as a, as a team implementing that program, so thank y'all for your hard work on that. All right, we have the downtown parking and mobility study professional services task order.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is a professional service task order for the downtown parking and east-west mobility study for both the transportation and the planning department. Per staff's request, Neil Schaefer submitted a proposal in the amount of 235, $235,775 to perform a study of the parking and pedestrian mobility issues in the downtown and adjoining areas to the north and south. The purpose of this study is to help the city understand current parking needs, enhance east-west mobility in the northern downtown area, and help staff plan for future development in the downtown area. The study will include an inventory of current downtown parking, a review of the city's current parking policies, and recommendations of future, for current and future parking needs. Also included within this study are evaluations and recommendations for improved ability to, to enhance, to enhance street connections, accommodate old-street parking demands, and preserve the safety of road users. The primary funding source for this study will come from the Economic Development Contractual Services Budget. Staff is seeking approval of this proposal to move forward with the project. Mr. Greg Judy with Neil Schaefer, who happens, their office happens to be right in the middle of this park, this study area, will be presenting a brief overview of the study and transportation and planning will be available afterwards to answer any questions. Mr. Judy.
Mayor, council members, good evening, it's been a while since we've been before you, so it's good to be here. Whitney Sullivan is here with me to help keep me straight and answer any questions y'all may have as we go, go forward, so I'm gonna start this presentation. We just have a few slides. Jim and Greg thought it would be good to run through some of this information, we'll do that quickly. So, as Jim alluded, there's really two primary components to the effort that, that we've been discussing. One is a comprehensive downtown parking review, and, and we'll show some details on that in just a second, and then this concept of east-west mobility, particularly kind of the north half, north side of downtown, looking at connectivity, options and scenarios connecting from Memorial Boulevard over to, to Green Drive. So, the red boundary kinda outlines, it's a, you know, fairly large area, again, with that northern section mainly consisting of the east-west connectivity and, and mobility review, and then as you get in, more into the downtown proper area and extending south across Broad Street, looking at kind of parking assessment and needs as, as, you know, development continues to change and shift and do all kinds of things here in the downtown that we're all excited about, so, so this, something we wanted to look at, to, to try to get ahead of the game, if you will, a bit with that. So, just a little bit of slang here, but, you know, times are changing and downtown's evolving, and y'all see that every day, and it's sometimes kind of surprising how, how quickly that comes upon us, so as we discussed this with staff, we, you know, we felt like we wanted to develop a scope that looked at a kind of comprehensive review of kind of what the situation is today presently, as well as going in to the future as land use proposals and projects come online, that's, that's before the city today, so wanna look at, you know, best practices and action items, and kinda come up with an action plan that both the, the planning department, as well as the engineering and transportation departments can, can utilize. So, again, diving, diving down a little bit into the details of the, kind of the scope, but again, this kinda gives it the bullet points, give you a little bit of an overview of that, but we're really looking to utilize the city's existing GIS database and information, and trying to populate that with, with kind of cataloging of the parking elements and, and trying to visualize it and create some tools to help assess that situation, and then just go through, you know, a needs assessment and outreach with the public and the business community, there'll be some opportunities for that, and again, trying to come up with some action items to, to, to try to plan, plan for this, that might be policy issues, certainly could be some technology opportunities with providing some real-time driver information, and there's some, some opportunities potentially for that, and look at ways to, at, at doing that. And to wrap up, again, from the east-west mobility component of this, again, just trying to look at the connectivity and, and options between Memorial and, and Greenland, staff talked about how there's pretty good, you know, flow and mobility, maybe north-south, but, but being able to maybe look at something similar with that going east-west, but not just from a vehicular standpoint, but as well as other multimodal, you know, issues with pedestrians and so forth, so we'll be taking a look at that and coming up with some items for the city to consider, and, and hopefully to move the community forward. So, again, just wanted to give, be pretty brief, but, but wanted to give it a chance for y'all to see what we were, what we're looking at doing, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, we certainly appreciate, wanna express our appreciation for the opportunity. Again, as Jim said, we, our office is just up the street here in downtown, and we look forward to being a part of this, so with that, wish you good evening.
Could, could you tell us what the timeframe is for this?
Certainly, it's a great question, so we're expecting about a six-to-month, eight-month process, maybe as we get into the summer, late, late summer months, we wanna leave a little bit of flexibility to be able to work through some of the public outreach and schedule, schedule, and that kind of opportunities, but we're, we're expecting it to be done in, you know, about, you know, six to eight months, so.
Any questions?
Are we, just to make sure I'm square on this, are, are we talking, you're gonna come back to us with some specific, you need to make this road a one-way road, you need to make that road a two-lane, you need to widen this road, I mean, what, what are we talking about, a result?
Yes, certainly, there, there could be traffic operational issues as far as intersection control, sidewalks, but certainly connectivity. If there's an opportunity to make a connection that doesn't exist today, then, you know, we would look at that, certainly, you mentioned one-way streets and, and that, how that relates to part, on-street parking and, and so forth, so I, really, everything's on the table as far as that, but I, I think what we hope to come back with, generally speaking, is an action plan that, that, that's been kind of vetted through the community process, but certainly through staff, and then come back to, to the council to, to, you know, present that, if that's something that we wanna do, but certainly, yeah.
Rick, a good example that we've talked about, and I think Ronnie, Bill, Madeline, I think we all know, if you're driving along that east-west corridor, coming from downtown, there's some, there's some intersections where it is a four-way stop, there's some intersections...
Can be confusing, can't it?
That are not four-way stops, and so we've gone through and talked about even here recently about repainting all of the stop bars, but some of it doesn't make sense if we're gonna make those one-way streets, or how that's gonna happen, so I think this is something very welcome in the downtown area, especially as traffic has increased with all of the improvements that are happening downtown.
That's a hard thing sometimes to keep your thumb on too, because of the dynamic nature of the business and the redevelopment trends, that those patterns can change, and it's good to revisit that, so that's something we hope to, to be able to take a look at.
It would be nice if, as you're going through this, and I was reading the whole program, but maybe have the opportunity somewhere that we can ask for community input for some of the people who live downtown, who've all given us suggestions over the years about areas that we needed improvement, whether it's on-street parking or, or four-way stops. I know there's one on Lydell and Manny, not too far from your house, where we have consistently have a lot of accidents in that area.
We will be collecting some traffic data as we, maybe not right during the holidays, but after we get out of the first year, we'll be collecting some traffic count data to be helped to inform that decision, as well as some, some in technology and, and kind of big data that we look at, look at trends from, folks are going from one, you know, north, northwest side to the southeast side, and see where people are tending to travel, so we'll, we'll have some of that information available to us to be able to help.
The new development downtown's gonna make a substantial, and it's not, we're not gonna feel that in six or eight months, so I hope there's some way or formulas or metrics that you can pour into this that can give us some idea looking forward to, because that's gonna be a dramatic impact on how things flow in our downtown.
We've discussed with Jim and Greg to look at known, with larger projects that will have more of an impact, to be able to, to try to look at that, so we'll be able to put, kinda throw that in the mix, and then to be able to try, especially from a parking standpoint, too.
Are we also looking at opportunities, seeing if we can do one-way streets, things of that nature as well?
Jim has mentioned that, and then we will be looking, you know, looking at, again, from a parking standpoint, but also from a circulation, you know, there's trade-offs, go one-way street versus two-way streets, and that, that's, that's something we'll be, we'll be discussed, discussed, so.
Yeah, I guess, you know, again, it's kinda on my same thing you might have heard me ask about, you know, some of these other things, is about the design cost, and, you know, 250,000 bucks is a lot of money, I just don't wanna be, we're paying 250,000 for somebody to come back and tell us we need more parking downtown, I mean, we all know more parking downtown. I mean, we all know that, right?
Yeah.
I want it to be.
In a logical way, yeah.
Very, you know, it needs to be very specific. These are solutions that we can go then execute is, would be what I'd want to pay that kind of money for. So just for the record, laying it out there.
And we hope to come back with some planning, you know, cost estimates that will allow some of those action items to be carried forward and they can have a program to prioritize ways. So that's traditionally the way we will approach something like that. So, and Mr. Lance, certainly, I can hear you.
Do you have a way to kind of estimate the one college development and the traffic effects of that one development?
Well, Jim, it's okay if I comment. We actually have a separate work order under on-call contract that we're actually going to be looking at that specific development and a couple of intersections on Spring Street that are currently just to stop, stop conditions. And yes, we do, there's some product and, and I guess some technical information that we have to be able to estimate what the traffic generation, trip generation will be for that kind of development. And we'll be actually going through that exercise specifically for that development, specifically for those intersections, actually as a part of a separate task that we've been asked to, to help with. But in the grander scheme of things, as Mr. Shacklet mentioned, we'll be able to look at some larger projects that we know are down the pipeline, that we can try to look at from a, from a parking and trip generation. But there, there is information that we have available to us to, to look at that. And that's actually pretty common for, for the city to do that, so, whether it's a work alter, whoever.
All right. Motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, thank you. All right, we have one beer permit in front of us for Tennessee Golf Station.
This is for an entertainment venue at 1276 Northwest Broad Street. The applicants met all requirements for a beer permit and staff recommends approval pending final building and code inspection.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I have one recommendation to filling out the Gateway Commission, Mr. Dave Frazier.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Something to the council also, if y'all start looking, we've got several commission appointments that are going to be coming up over the next quarter, six months. So if y'all see people in the community that you have that want to serve, please don't hesitate to send those to Kenya or Brenda or Craig in the office and then we can start. You know, we, we had the conversation and I think it's something that is, you want to keep that institutional knowledge in place, but we also have to be refreshing some of these boards to cultivate the future leaders that are on a lot of our boards. And we have a lot of the boards that people have served for a long time. And so we've got to find that mix of bringing some, I don't want to say young, but some.
New.
Younger, yeah. Or, yeah, new, new, new life. So, all right, any statements, any statements to be paid?
No.
All right, we have any other business from staff?
We'll meet again on the second of December.
Okay.
So happy Thanksgiving.
That's right.
Next week.
All right, any other, Rick?
Just to make a comment, we, just some discussions that we've had at Planning Commission lately that just kind of get out for you guys to be thinking about a little bit. We've had a recent development come through that, and you know, we had that Oak Haven, which was at Sulfur Springs, you know, the gas station liquor store with the little cut-through. We've had another development come through where there was a lot of discussion about stubbing out and when should we, when should we not. It was kind of a smaller development. But, you know, part of what I think, I think that the planning staff is going to be getting together with Planning Commission and I want y'all to be thinking about this is just kind of an idea of, you know, is there a, not necessarily something as simple as a, just a one size, you know, if there's X number of houses in the development that all of a sudden you don't have to stub it out. It's not going to be that simple, but I think there's going to be some discussion of, you know, maybe we don't need three stub-outs for every single development that ever, you know, occurs, you know, just because we can. You know, that if it's fifteen homes or whatever the number is and everything around it's already developed, that maybe a cul-de-sac's fine. And I think kind of part of the point that stuck with me was, you know, I live in a cul-de-sac that there's only one way out for about thirty houses, right? It's within a neighborhood that has three ways out, but for the thirty houses on my cul-de-sac, there's only one way out. And so there's probably some, you know, some, at some point, some factors that would go into this to where, you know, we all agree connectivity is important and all that kind of stuff, but just kind of, just like what the council said at Oak Haven, sometimes there, we don't necessarily have to execute that in order to have a successful development. And, and part of what this development was, that was coming through frankly, was a kind of a more, you know, an upscale and trying to get kind of a more, you know, private type feel to it or whatever. And, you know, they ended up stubbing it out and that's just, that's the way that kind of went. But just, I think there's going to be some discussions. I want everybody here to be sort of thinking through how you feel about that and, and not, you know, not at all going down any road of, you know, we want to get rid of a bunch of connectivity or stubs or any of that. It's just kind of, you know, if there's a one in ten or a one in twenty where it just sort of fits, that we don't necessarily have to stub out all over the place, maybe we should consider that. So just if y'all keep that in mind as it goes through Planning Commission, so y'all are kind of a little bit up to speed on, after it gets to that level, okay?
Any other business from the council?
Well, to those watching and all of those who work for the city, to all of our staff, it's that time of the year that we get to tell you how thankful we are to represent you in the city, to be able to represent not only our employees, but the many families, men, women who are in, in this city and will let you know that as a group, we're proud to do that every day. So we have lots to be blessed and lots to be thankful for. So enjoy your Thanksgiving. With that, we'll stand adjourned.